So for this board meeting, community members will be able to participate either by attending the meeting in person in the Lebanon middle school cafeteria or through Zoom via telephone or video conferencing. So first, I would like to open up the public hearing for a proposed $5,000 donation from the Cunningham family for the Lebanon high school baseball team.
Just for context, the Cunningham family has unsolicited has donated $5,000 for use by the LHS baseball team, so there needs to be a public hearing as far as, I mean, it has to be allocated for the baseball team, but I don't have particular specifics on what it would be used for, but we have to have a hearing.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this topic of the donation for the baseball team? I don't see anyone in their room. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Any questions among board members? All right, I think we can close the public hearing. Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We will be holding public comment during this meeting, but it will move down the agenda a little bit after a couple of other items. Our public comment is governed by policy BEDH. Joanne, are there any additions or deletions?
None.
So we were going to go to correspondence next. MJ, is there any correspondence since the last meeting?
Yes, we had one letter and it was dealing with the crosswalk, the new crosswalk outside of the middle school and as well as support for changing the gender choices on our forms.
Okay, thank you. So next we'll approve the minutes and the nominations and resignations and then we'll move on to item 8A, the strategic plan survey results with Amanda Silver. And then we'll skip to the new business 10A for the high school trip to Athens and Rome. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from September 8th, 2021? Thank you, Stephen.
I've moved, we approved the minutes, sorry, the minutes?
Yeah. Minutes from the previous meeting from September, what was the date? September 8th.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Is that on the agenda or in the minutes?
That's on the minutes.
Okay.
Is Roger on the Zoom call? I didn't get a chance to look.
Yes.
Okay. Are there other comments or corrections on the minutes?
I didn't hear that.
All right, not seeing any. Let's have a vote in favor of accepting, approving these minutes and unanimous. All right, is there a motion to approve nominations and acknowledge resignations and retirements?
I'll make a motion to approve the nominations, resignations, and retirements dated September 22nd, 2021.
Is there a second? Aaron? Any comments on these, Joanne?
Yes, but I'm putting forward today is to nominate Katie Roach as the interim principal for Mount Leb School. She and I have forged a plan together to continue to support the Mount Lebanon school community. She will start that position officially on Monday and we will be posting the position probably November and do a full search for the next Mount Leb principal and hope to bring a nomination forward to the board sometime late January, early February.
Any other comments on the nominations?
I just have a question. Is that for the next academic year or to finish up this academic year?
The next academic year. She'll be interim for the '21-'22 school year. Thank you.
All right, all in favor of approving these nominations and resignations? And that's unanimous, eight and zero opposed.
Thank you very much.
All right, so if I didn't miss anything, I think we're on to 10A, strategic plan survey results with Amanda Silver.
Sure, let me just set it up. One second, please.
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome.
I'll just do a short introduction before you begin the review. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's great.
Perfect. So I've been very fortunate to work with Amanda for the last seven or eight years. Amanda was instrumental in the first Momentum meeting that I held with our administration. She's assisted with all of the strategic plans that we've had and helped me facilitate the strategic plan forum that we held and other forums as well. So she's been an integral part of our team in reviewing survey data and reporting back out to the community the results of that data. So thank you for your collaboration all these years, Amanda, and feel free to go ahead with the focus of the strategic plan survey summary.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Superintendent Roberts. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. And many thanks to the staff and teachers, board, and community members that are present. I'm happy to be here and it's equally been a pleasure to be supporting the work of the district and to watch its growth over the several years that I've been involved. So I'm going to take about 15 minutes to talk us through the key points of the survey summary and then we'll have time for questions at the end. So if you could hold your questions, that would be great. And to start, I want to begin with a little bit of context and, Joanne, please feel free to jump in if I miss anything. But this summary, this survey, is part of a much broader effort to gather input from the teachers, staff, faculty, parents, and community members over the course of this year to inform your upcoming new strategic plan. And as the earliest community inquiry, this survey took place in June, it's really, the role of this survey is to be a starting point and a place to help shape the questions that you want to follow up on as a district in the next round of surveys and different ways you're going to be engaging the community and soliciting input for priorities in the strategic plan. So it's a great starting point. And here you can see the different data points for the strategic plan and the timeline for those completing with the plan around May-June 2022. So let's talk about who responded to the survey briefly. There were 64 to 67 people responded to the quantitative questions, 5 to 27 people responded to the open-ended questions. And then you can see on the bar graph to the right, the school representation. So the numbers here are going to add up to more than 100% because respondents have children in more than one school. And you can see here that the majority of respondents have children in Lebanon middle school. We also know that the majority of respondents, 84%, identified as parents guardians residing in Leb rather than folks who live in other towns that have kids in the Lebanon school district, and 15% identified as staff. So I want to be very clear here, this is really important. This is not a large sample size from your district when you think about the total numbers of people that could be responding. And that makes it a great starting point, right? It's a way to look at what the further questions might be that you want to ask as you shape the next points for community engagement. The survey did not ask for additional demographic data from respondents around race, gender, age, all of those things. And so it provides a broad perspective rather than very specific perspectives. So I want to get into the highlights. I'm going to cover the highlights, the high scores and the lower scores and the key themes that surfaced. And if you're interested in diving deep into the data, you have the survey report and analysis document that you can refer to and also all of the quantitative data as well. So the first section of the survey is focused on mission. And in the strengths, high scores area, you had 71 to 76 of your respondents indicating that the school district is successful at meeting four of the key factors of the CARES mission. Those are included right here. And then the comments here on the strength side included deep appreciation of district staff and teachers and administrators going above and beyond in helping children particularly during the last year of the pandemic, supporting different needs of learners, and thoughtful planning regarding remote learning during the pandemic. Now, the opportunities here where there were lower scores were around the aspect of the CARES mission called "Supporting the Needs of Every Learner." And specifically, the things that surfaced here were around supporting children with learning challenges, improving communication with parents around learning challenges, and managing homework load. There were a variety of open-ended comments highlighting that homework load was inconsistent by class, sometimes it was too little, sometimes it was too much, and so that was something that surfaced. Moving from mission into learning environment, the core strengths or the highest scores that surfaced were detailed here. So 70 to 79% of respondents agreed that students are treated with respect, that school is a safe place, that students are prepared for next steps in the educational journey with technology, that school provides engaging and inquiry-based learning experiences, parents are respected by teachers and staff, parents have the opportunity to ask questions about their child's assignments, and there is a sense of pride in what children are learning, what students are learning. On the opportunity side, ratings and open-ended responses indicated opportunities for improvement around welcoming parent input on school climate, students' preparation for the next step in their journey regarding social-emotional learning, parents and caretakers of, parents, caretakers, and families of diverse backgrounds being involved in the schools, and that homework expectations are reasonable. So these are, these are the statements that received lower agreement from the respondents. Now moving to the next section, we have positive culture and community. And here in the higher score section, we have 68 to 73% of respondents agreeing that the school is providing an environment that fosters positive culture and community. And specifically, things that surfaced were, as higher scores, were staff and administrators actively working to create a sense of belonging and a safe and welcoming environment, teachers and adults taking action to stop discrimination, and appreciation and respect for diversity among all students. The comments here highlight the district's commitment to diversity and a positive and accepting culture for folks. And the comments also highlighted that there's agreement around there needing to be, that there is more to do in this area. And the clear opportunities that surfaced here were around these two particular areas. Students in school are treated, the statement that students in school are treated unfairly by other students because of race, gender, and disability received about a third of respondents agreed with that statement. Another third strongly disagreed, and then another third were neutral, citing that they didn't have enough experience to answer that question. And the second, the second statement here that received lower scores is around respondents feeling comfortable reporting an act of discrimination. And here, 62% of the respondents agreed that they feel comfortable reporting an act of discrimination and therefore, you know, about a third agreed, well, actually, to break it down, 10% disagreed actively with the statement. And then 27% of the respondents to this question were either neutral or stated that they just didn't have enough information to respond. And so the open-ended comments in this section around positive culture and community really centered around two key themes. The dominant theme was that respondents didn't have enough direct experience or know of others' experiences enough to be able to answer the question well. Others thought that perhaps students themselves would be better positioned to answer that question, whether they experienced discrimination. And additional responses included that, again, there's more that the district could be doing. And there are, as well as some examples of incidents of bullying with mixed involvement from teachers. So that's the focus area on positive culture and community. The next section that I'm going to talk about is student services and supports. So here we had 10 to 25%, depending on the question, 10 to 25% of the total respondents identified as having a child who receives student services and supports. And of those 10 to 25%, a majority of respondents indicated positive experiences with special education support and services, and those are listed here on the slide. In addition, a majority of total respondents, 60 to 84%, indicated awareness of school nurses, counselors, and the resources that special educators and related services provide. And a majority of all respondents also indicated that they know who to contact at the school regarding student mental health. The areas of opportunity here around the lowest ratings primarily relate to students that are receiving special education supports. And the open-ended comments here highlighted that the support is variable depending on the teacher and that it can be inconsistent. So that's where the lowest scores came from. And then in addition, the survey highlighted that there is, in general, less awareness for the following supports amongst the broader community, not, not just people who are receiving supports for their children. And, and about 10% of respondents indicated that more information would be useful in all of these different support areas here on the slide. So moving to curriculum instruction and assessment priorities, we've got around curriculum development and alignment. We've got 85% of the respondents rated articulating competencies and standard-based curriculum at all levels as the highest priority. That surfaced to the top. And then right below that, the number two was 78% of the respondents rated that integrating technology into the curriculum and development is a top focus. In the area of instructional priorities, 55% of all the respondents rated all of the instructional priorities as important. But amongst those, and there were about 10, the highest ratings in this order, from higher to lower, included expanding STEM, implementing social-emotional learning curriculum, expanding integration of humanities instruction, K through 12, and implementing project-based learning. And then with regards to assessment priorities, the two that surfaced as the highest priorities were increasing effective use of data and implementing more performance-based measures. In this section, the comments, the open-ended comments included themes around a desire for a more individualized approach to learning and emphasis that technology can continue to be better used and integrated into the curriculum. And then finally, the last section of the survey was focused on enhancing facilities. And so here, as a strength, you can see 85 to 86% of respondents felt that they had sufficient technology, internet, and internet service to support their child's education. And then in terms of priorities, more than a third of the respondents ranked the following here as the top five priorities for enhancing facilities. So we've got, in this order, expanding MLS to include onsite cooking kitchen, technology, all the things related to technology, replacing the servers and filters, improving educational interaction between everyone, expanding HSS to include additional classrooms and redesign student support spaces, expanding MLS multipurpose room, accessible stage, and additional lunch PE, community gathering space, and then finally, improving front entrances to address safety for LHS, MLS, and HSS. So those, those are the key highlights of each of the sections of the survey. And I want to pause here and open it up for questions, additional comments, anything that folks want to share.
I have one small question, sorry, just because you just went over that page on the priorities page.
Yes.
Can you just explain to me what that means when it says highest assessment priorities, increasing effective use of data, implementing more performance-based measures? I'm not even sure actually what that means, so could you explain?
Yes, let me go back to that and, oops, hold on one second. Which one did you say? Sorry.
Yeah, priorities, curriculum, curriculum instruction and assessment priorities. Highest assessment priorities, yeah, right there.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay. So there was a section in the survey, a question that was specific to what's most important for us to pay attention to in terms of how we assess, how we assess students' learning, right? And so the, there were three key items that people could, could rate, and, and so that's where that focus is. Does that help? Does that make sense?
I can speak a little bit more to it.
Yeah.
Just to add, as part of the survey, there were definitions for these different pieces, but what they're referencing here is you're looking at which bullet point, the fourth one, the highest assessment priorities?
Yeah.
So right now, what we are trying to do is we started, and you'll see this in my report, Data Wise, which was through Harvard a couple of years ago. And what it means is you don't just gather data, you actually use it and you talk about it and you articulate it. Children are aware of it, parents are aware of it, and you really use data to drive the instruction. So that's part of what that means. So as we develop our different curriculum areas, we'd be also saying, what tools are we using to make sure that our students are making improvements? And so more performance-based measures would be ways that we are effectively analyzing how our students are doing and the mastery of certain content and skills. And it really leads very well with, you know, we've talked about UDL quite a bit, individualized learning, making sure that it's just not one lesson plan that's for 20 students, but getting to know the individual students and how they learn. And then also through Data Wise, we now have a list of the tools we're using. So for example, when Lisa comes next month, she'll talk about the ERLA for ARC. She'll talk about SAS testing for the state. And how do they all combine to give us a better sense of a profile as a district so we know how to synchronize our energy and make sure that our kids are getting the best learning experience that they can?
So I kind of have a two-part question. So when you said 67 people responded, is that 67 unique people? Or could it be one person had three kids, so they took the survey three times? So you're really only getting, you're getting three opinions but from one person?
I don't think we had a ability to know that because it was anonymous. So we didn't go back in and see who the 67 respondents are. So I think that, I mean, that could be a possibility. Do you know, Amanda?
Were parents encouraged to take it if they had kids in different buildings to take the survey again? I don't remember how it was structured, but...
They, well, that, I don't, I don't think so, but the, yeah, there was no, there was no way to know if folks took it more than once. So I would just agree with what Joanne said.
So I guess the second part is, I mean, this seems like an alarmingly small number of respondents to me, and is this typical in these type of surveys? Or how do we gather more feedback? Because I don't feel like in a district with 1,600 students, 67 respondents is a representative sample.
Well, that's why, Amanda, if you can go back to the pyramid.
Mm-hmm.
They were coming out of the pandemic. People were tired. I tried to get it out as best as I could, and, you know, that's just what we happen to have. But remember, this is just a broad brush stroke. This is just kind of what people gave feedback. Now we're going to work with, you know, somebody who has diversity and equity background. So we'll pull from these when we do the equity audit. That's another way of getting it, and the Infinity Groups. So there's lots of ways to get at different sections of this. The principals' school surveys that will be going out October, November will be another brush stroke, but it'll be specific to their schools with very similar questions. So that's a third way. We're going to have a community forum, hopefully, so that's a fourth way. So we're going to come at it in all different ways. In the past, I've probably have had 200 or 300 people respond to a strategic plan survey. But you're in the middle of a pandemic, you do the best that you can. You pull from this, you just really appreciate the people who took the time to give this input. And it's, as Amanda said, I think, you know, it's a springboard of conversation. This just doesn't necessarily capture everyone's opinions in the community. But I thought it was important to share it because it is data and the people who took the time to, to respond, we want to own and, and respect the fact that they did respond to it because it went out multiple times.
Yeah, and I would, I, I would say, just to build on that, that it's great to have an initial, I agree with the comment that was just made, it's not a representative sample size, but it is, it is a great way to get the conversation started and it helps you all point yourselves in directions of questions that you really want to follow up on. And that's what I see this survey being incredibly useful for as you move into all the other data sets that you're going to move into.
So can you talk to us a little bit then about these individual school surveys if that's the next thing that's coming out? So how are those disseminated? What?
So prior to the pandemic, principals, based on when they came in, a year after, they usually did a feedback from the staff and a feedback from parents. Because of the pandemic, all four schools will do that kind of a survey in October and November. And I'd like the person who's going to assist with the equity audit, help with those questions. And they'll push it out all at the same time. And the Mount Lev one will provide information as to what they're looking for in the next principal, as well as these kinds of questions. And I think parents, you know, they're just, there's a lot going on at the end of the school year, May-June last year, and they're more apt to fill out something that's coming directly from the principal. And that way, if you have children in multiple schools, you're going to see one from Mount Lev in the middle school and potentially the high school, and you would be filling them out specific to your child's journey and experience in that school.
So could we, are we thinking that we're going to use these questions as we're saying, like, these are our first, first data, right? So for instance, I'm, I'm wondering, since we talked about, as an example, homework load came up several times, but will there be specific questions specific to MLS, LMS, H, LHS about, could there be specific questions about, say, homework load or something like that?
Absolutely. That's where this kind of helps drive some of the questions. And also, the reason I didn't want to go with MAC is because it was just a bank that was national. So I'm hoping and working with the person who has experience with this, they, they can review this and then they can say, here... And then they can say, here's where you really want to target your questions, where you're going to get meaningful information from parents. So definitely, we will use this just as a start. But there are other questions that have been asked in the past. So I want to work with the principals to say, what questions were really meaningful for you? Which ones would you ask again? Because you want, for principals who've been here a long time, kind of want to see how you're doing. And then which questions would you tweak or they were confusing for parents?
Yeah, so it seems like it would be really helpful to not only have diversity questions, right? That, that sort of range of questions, right?
Pretty much we'll take this, what we pulled, and you'll see these sections in the school-wide one. So I think we can use this format, hopefully get more people to respond. And it's more school-specific, which is where we would go next. And then the equity audit's just the third layer on top of all of these. And hopefully a community forum to share it out. Get people together would be wonderful. We haven't had a chance to do that. And meanwhile, the administrative group, the SALT group, we reviewed this. We spent an entire day at the Momentum meeting going through all this data. So people have in mind the direction they want to head from this third year, the three-year plan, to the next three-year strategic plan. So it really dovetails pretty well, then, which was, which was my hope. And I know the number's low, but I do want to send my appreciation out to those who took the time to, to provide input. We really value it. So thank you for doing that.
Other questions for Amanda? Well?
I have one more question on the last slide. Well, second to the last slide, the strengths and priorities enhancing facilities slide. Thanks. So it says more than one-third of respondents ranked the following, the top five priorities. Top five out of how many? How many priorities were they, were available to them to rank?
Great question. I'm going to go into the survey to look right now.
You look on pages 44 out of 50 in your packet. I think that's where an enhancing facility starts. And where it says expand MLS 2 on page 45, 50, those were the options that people had to weigh in on it.
I think there are 11.
Slide, yeah.
Thank you.
Page 46.
Yeah, so there are 11 total, and you can see the detail on the pages that Joanne just mentioned.
Other questions for Amanda?
All right. Sorry. Yes. I have a lot of questions. One more question. So on the, you mentioned that of the people who responded, I want to make sure I understood you correctly. Of the people who responded, only 10 to 25% of them had indicated that they had experience with special education services?
Yes. Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so really, as far as when we're talking about numbers, the people who responded to this, who had experience of special education was like, how many people? Eight, seven? Right, like not, not very many, right?
Correct.
It does seem like that's also another area that we should, when we're making this neck, these next surveys, make sure that we're targeting that particular area? Because I do think it's hard to say if we're getting any kind of information from nine people about what's happening.
Yes, and people sometimes think of an equity audit specific to race. Or an equity audit is specific to individual subgroups of which those receiving student supports would be a subgroup and would be part of an infinity group conversation as well.
You've said that twice. What is an infinity group?
It's a, it's a term used when there are people who have similar characteristics or similar experiences that are pulled together. And by infinity, it's that they're, they're linked together. So it might be LGBTQ plus, something along those lines.
Any other questions for Amanda? All right, well, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a good night. Can you make me a host and I will then reopen it? Thanks, have a great night.
Working on it.
I know the feeling.
Okay, here we go.
All right. I see it. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Bye-bye.
Bye.
So I think we're going to go next to 10A, discussion and action around the high school trip to Athens and Rome in April. Which sounds very exciting. Can I please go?
Hello, and thank you for having this item on the agenda this evening. I'm Tom LaFleur. I'm the Latin teacher at Lebanon High School. And I led this very same tour two years ago. And I would be inclined to say from the feedback from the kids and the one parent who attended, that it was a huge success. And that is, I believe primarily due to the fine job that ACIS, the company that actually puts on these tours, is able to produce for us. They are this year especially concerned, as you can probably imagine, about safety. And so they will require that anyone participating in this tour be fully vaccinated. And they have not yet made up their minds about this, but I think they are also thinking about requiring that be, there be a test before anyone gets on that plane. So this is what I bring to you this evening. I know you've had some experience, opportunity to look at some handouts earlier in the week. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
One question that usually gets asked is if they can't go for a specific reason, are they able to get refunded for their costs?
Yes, there is a risk-free expenditure of funds. And that will apply up to and including October, no, November 1st. So if anything happens, whatever happens, even if nothing happens and they just decide they don't want to go, they can get a full refund up until November 1st.
Thank you.
So is this trip planned over April break? I guess I.
It is the spring break, yes.
So I think the current requirements to come back into the United States from being abroad are that you have to have a test in order to leave, in order to come back. And if you test positive, then you need to quarantine for 14 days in the other country. Are all of those sort of things being watched and tracked and prepared for?
Yes, they are being tracked and prepared for. And I had that all spelled out for me by the person that I relate to with the organization. And it's part of the package that parents are receiving or whoever is going to be paying the bill for this. Whoever is paying the bill is getting all of the particulars about that.
Okay.
That's a very good question.
I think you're looking for a motion this evening and, and approval to go ahead so you can inform parents so they have time to save up.
Yeah, I'm Dr.
Let you know.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Um, a motion to, what should I say? To approve the LHS trip to Athens and Rome scheduled for April 2022 and organize through ACIS.
MJ seconds. Any other discussion among board members?
I guess the question I had is, is there opportunity or will there be opportunity to continue to take a look at this in the context of what's happening in Europe with COVID rates and whatnot? You know, you, you mentioned that it's risk-free until the beginning of November, but November to April is still a very long gap. So what, what happens, what mechanisms are in place to say, come January or February, you know, boy, it looks really scary there. Is this still the right thing to be doing?
So you bring.
May I, may I answer that question? It's a very good question also. And of course, you're right, we're in a state of flux and upheaval with regard to the virus. And yes, a lot can happen between now and January, February, March. This whole plan may need to be suspended and redated by the company that's putting it on. And that, this will be why everyone who actually participates monetarily in this program or this trip, it's being strongly suggested to them that they buy the insurance that's available. In fact, for $5,000, it's a rather small investment in making sure that you don't get lost in the economic shuffle to your need to be a serious change.
I just think maybe it might be worthwhile that as a board, we sort of keep tabs and maybe take another look at it as the date gets closer, just in case things are changing.
I agree. And if the company does decide to, you know, at some point not go this April, would, would they possibly postpone another year? And we can have still the opportunity with them or does it just kind of start fresh?
Well, they've talked about a summer possibly. But I sense that in the past, the school district has been somewhat reluctant to approve of something that happens during the summer. I could be wrong about that, but that's my understanding.
So back to your comment, I mean, what is the reality if the board approves or supports the trip today? But then in January, the majority doesn't support the trip today? I mean, I, I don't.
We can cancel, the board has the authority to cancel at any point and say, we're not supporting this trip. The key is letting the parents know that it's a bit of a risk if they don't get the additional insurance part. But the board can go all the way up until right before the trip to say, we're concerned about the health and safety of students going on this trip and we don't support it. And that's the authority of the board. And, you know, we hope that this trip can go forward. But as, you know, Tom mentioned, we're just going to have to check continuously up until that point. But the board has the right to do that. And I know that many schools did have trips and they canceled trips. So I just want to make sure, some schools had difficulty getting the reimbursement. So I just want to make sure that you and Ian are confident with this group, that people would get the reimbursement. Because some, some schools had a really difficult time with that. Particularly the trips that were April of 2019, right after March. So you just want to make sure that you and Ian are on top of that.
Is this, is this open only to Latin students, students taking Latin?
You asked. It is open to any interested student and their parents, families, yes.
And how big a group are you planning?
Well, we have six who jumped in without any assurance that it was going to happen or even that the board would approve it. But I suspect that if I have the opportunity to announce board approval, we should have at least several more people joining us.
Is there a maximum that they take on these?
There is no maximum. We can fill a 747.
So you mentioned that you had one parent the last time you went on the trip. So how does the chaperoning work? If it's just you and all of the kids, does the tour company provide chaperones if parents don't sign up?
It is, it was very nice that there was an adult in that group last year. I enjoyed his presence and interacting with him. The, there can be as many as eight students without an additional adult.
Oh, it's just you and the eight?
So if we get two more, we've reached our limit for the eight students and I. And after that, we need to try to, well, last year, two years ago, I had three members of the staff who were standing in line waiting to be chaperones.
So.
It's not, looking at the literature, it's not crystal clear exactly what the insurance covers. Some of it's medical insurance, et cetera. So Tom, you and I can go over that and make it clear to parents exactly what they have to pay in order to ensure that they're going to get as much of a refund as possible before they have to make a full commitment financially. And typically, there's a meeting, I think you had a meeting last time, of parents in the evening, where Tom, an administrator, will be there to explain the details of the trip. And I'm sure that we'll have paperwork that they have to sign in order to, such that they understand the financial commitment they're making and what they can expect to receive that. But it was a successful trip. They loved going with Tom last time. Well, I have a bit of a test run in February with a crew going to Iceland. And so, let's see. But one of the problems is that they're a senior and they make this commitment and they give us a, they give us credit, so to speak, ACIS. Then what do we do with that senior who's not able to go? And you're right, summer trips are not ideal, but we lose oversight of the kids, especially one who's graduated. Could be a road student. That is, you know, my experience of some.
Other questions? All right, let's vote. All in favor of opposing or approving this trip? All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your questions, too.
All right, so I think now we're going to go back to public comment. Is that right, Joanne?
You're right.
Okay.
I think that's where to come back to that.
Again.
So people, people reading the speech.
I'm not seeing anybody here in the audience. I do not see any hands raised on the. Here's a panelist. I'm not seeing, and the hand went down. So as you can see alongside me, oh, there's one. Hello, Faith.
Hi, I'm Faith, H Ward 2. And I just had a, I was struggling to remember what my question was. That's why my hand wasn't raised. I was wondering if you, when the new voting, if there's voting coming up in March for school board positions? And if you, for example, take attendance so that we can ask people who want to be on the school board, whether or not they have actually attended any meetings? Just to get an idea of how much of a commitment or how much they realize what a commitment it is.
I can answer that question for you, Faith. Prior to March, the vote, there is a forum that is both the city and the school board forum for counselors running and board members running. It was held virtually last year. And I don't know if it'll be in-person or virtually, but at that time, there is a, a person who facilitates the conversation and questions, and then individuals in the community can ask board, people who are running to be on the board or counselors questions, such as the one you just described.
I think I saw that on CAT TV. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other hands raised?
None.
All right, public comment is now closed. So I think we're going now to the leadership team updates.
Sure, I just need to get to the right screen. That's correct, okay. So my superintendent update is included in the packet. And I'm going to move my mic a little closer. I just had to move my binder. So as far as school health and safety matters, a letter just went out this evening letting parents know that for those who decided to participate. in voluntary pool testing, we're gonna start that next week. So we have the staffing in place. I'm actually driving to Concord on Monday to get a specific test because you have to pick them up. Some can be sent to the schools and some actually have to be picked up. So I'll be doing that. I've been communicating with lots of stakeholders about the back to school plan and voluntary testing, trying to send information out. There was a conference call with the nurses that provided some updates. And we recently had a coordinated virtual meeting with our school administrators, nurses, and concentric staff, kind of finalizing what the plan will look like. And a few concentric staff members that have already visited our schools so we could figure out how we would set it up, where, how it would happen and all those kinds of things. In regard to ESR, I continue communications with the DOE in regard to the application for 20% for diversity inclusion and a justice facilitator who will help with the equity audit and other targeted work. There's no response on that yet. And we did have communications with Paul Marinase and Margaret Thomas regarding the Mount Lev Nurses Office and the Cub Care Behavioral Space. And we did talk about a different concept for Hanover Street Cafeteria. We've considered putting the cafeteria toward the back, creating a corridor by the gym. It is much less expensive to put it there than to try to fit it between the high school building and the Hanover Street building. And in that sense, it could be a project in and of itself. So we're really trying to look at everything we can. And it wouldn't have its own cooking kitchen, it wouldn't need to. We'd continue to use the high school as a cooking kitchen. And what lots of schools do is they have a little cart that the meals go into the cart and then they just get driven over and there's a serving line and all of that. So there'll be more conversation, but I wanted you to know that we've followed up since the last board meeting. And we will continue going in that direction with ideas. I am working on the upcoming superintendent summit. They asked if I would create kind of a student case and a profile of what we're doing to support students. So I created that and sent it to the group. And it'll be a starter for conversations with other districts about how they're supporting students, social, emotional, and mental health. So I've been working with that group. And we have sent out several opportunities for our staff to participate in echo courses through Dartmouth focused on resiliency and mental health. Additional sessions for that. I've worked with DHMC and we did offer an opportunity coming up for suicide awareness and prevention, the two hour training. And we had 25 plus staff members sign up for that. So we'll be moving forward. The NHSBA webinar that I attended was school board public comment and I shared that information with school board members. The policy committee will be meeting in October, so we'll be looking at our September and our October policies. FNF will talk more about the ESR work, the communications with the city. The city is going to come to that October 13th board meeting. I believe it'll be the mayor, the city manager, Paul Coats, and perhaps a counselor. We had asked them if they would come. PNN, we have dates now set for LEA negotiations. And EC just met recently, Lil sent out the notes today, so that's happening. And whenever I get communications from board members, I do try to respond right away and get you that information. I've been able to visit quite a few of our schools. And one unexpected thing was the communication about the resignation of Mr. Lurico, in which I immediately took action to try to put a plan in place and communicate it as soon as possible. That note will be going out. That's why I stepped out, was to make sure if that sent. So we've been providing information to board members about water quality at school. So that was a good question. And it was responded to by Dana that we have followed up with water quality by doing the water fountains around the schools and the signage not to drink the water. It was appropriate for hand washing and things like that, but not for consumption. If FNF wants to bring that conversation up more with Dana, I don't have a lot more information than that, but we haven't talked about that in a little bit. We've had salt meetings, cult meetings, talking about federal state regulations and working with our paras to volunteer to help support staff and students with our meals. Quite a few conversations with Dartmouth. So the seed program connects underrepresented individuals who attended Dartmouth with students in our high school. So I'm working on permission slips and things like that to connect some of our high school students with seed program students at Dartmouth. Next year, we're going to be doing, we started play at school, learning about what that meant. And we do have a teacher that's very excited to next year have, an individual has a lot of experience work with her over at Mount Lev. And we will be having area meetings soon. So it's plain fields time to run the area meeting. So I've just been coordinating and connecting that. What you'll see, and I won't review it all, what I wanted to share with the, with the board and the community is, is the work that has been done in the past, where we are today and next steps. And what you will see is under the future work, the key areas that I would like the facilitator to assist with. And hopefully you'll see that there's a bridge between what we're looking at and strategic survey results. And then how it all will fit together with the multiple surveys. I also put in here for board reference, the actual form that I had to complete. Certainly not the juiciest thing to read, but it's the ESR three form and the GEPA. And I'm supposed to let boards know if I'm applying for funds and that you're aware that each of these funds has quite a few stipulations. So I wanted to put that right in the packet. Any questions?
Just about the water quality, is that not where they filter water bottles to the sinks? What, what sources?
I believe, and Tim, you might be able to help me. I believe it was the sinks in the individual classrooms or maybe not. It was a while.
Right, so this became an issue several years ago and Dana was actually preceded the DOE sort of concerning about it. And he had, because he has some lot of testing in his background. So we had already gone around. This building, of course, has no lead in any of the pipes because it's new. But we had gone around and he didn't test every spot in all the other three schools. But he tested, we did, I don't know, probably 25 testings. And you know, enough, we're showing traces of lead that, that's why we implemented the bump, the, I don't know what you want to call them, I call them bubblers. The, the water fill stations have that, they have filters in the bottom that filter out lead. And so that's why we require people to fill their water bottles and do any sort of drinking water from those facilities. And as far as any sort of sinks that are in the classrooms from days gone by, they can wash their hands or whatever. But that's, that's what we did, you know, they're replacing, replacing lead in the fixtures, which, you know, first you have to isolate where it's coming from, probably coming from the pipes that it's, you know, the buildings are old. But it's very cross prohibitive and something you, you do want to do over time. But it's not like we'll do a summer project or replacing the pipe. So it's a, a really good way to make sure that there's no lead in the drinking water. We're recognizing that we don't have, you know, I don't know what the cost would be, certainly in the seven figures or more to, to replace all the pipes across the whole district. So.
Cooking water. You know, I mean, I know classroom sinks, but obviously the sinks in the kitchens.
Correct, those are obviously fine, yes.
Just checking.
I mean, the, you know, kitchens, as you might imagine, have been, have been upgraded. And, you know, I don't, when it was lead, lead solder was banned, I don't know, decades ago. And those kitchens have been, you know, they were tested, but the piping in there, as you might imagine, is much newer than several decades.
I just had the question that the places where the lead and the kid, the kids potentially drinking the water is in element, all, both of the elementary schools? Is that? And the high school?
All three, all, both elementary schools and the high school. Do we have a prohibition against drinking the water from any place other than the?
So I guess I'm just wondering if it's pre-readers, are we making, are the signs, can they decode them?
I have to ask Dana if he has pictures as well. So that's what you're asking, is it a visual or just words? I know the teachers go through it with them and often with younger students, paras escort to the bathroom or their bathrooms are right in the classrooms. So I, I don't know, I haven't, I probably have looked at them a lot and I just couldn't tell you. If you could check with Dana when it comes back, that would be great.
And then I have a couple other questions. I wanted to know how many kids are signed up for the service through Concentric?
It's in the letter I just sent. The number 340 sticks in my head, but I'm not quite sure. I've worked with so many different numbers today. It would be the number of staff and students combined. So there was about 100 in the high school and then like 90, 90, and then 80 or something along those lines.
It does say 340.
Okay.
And the one you sent out tonight.
So we have 340 people who have elected to be part of the volunteer testing program.
And the denominator would be?
I don't know, Tim.
Right, there's about 1,600 students and roughly 360 full-time staff.
We also have, Tim, and do you have the updated or Pete updated staff vaccination data? I know we had, for the last board meeting and we didn't have, we just didn't think to share it out. And that question reminds me that we did look into that data.
I'm proud of myself for having this with me, how about that? Mount Lab, this is as of the last board meeting, I had this with me. I reported 74% earlier, Mount Lab, as of two weeks ago, was 82%. Hanover Street reported 75 and as of two weeks ago, there's 76. LMS, I reported 71, as of a couple weeks ago, there are 82. And LHS was 91 and now they're 98.
Wow.
Well, yeah, and again, to Stephen's point a couple weeks ago, like when that, maybe somebody got shot, their shots, but could just be more reporting too. So we, if you didn't report, we counted you as an L, so.
Something, I think you had said you were following up with people, so this is the, the additional.
Right, that's the second follow-up, yeah.
But then there's obviously, for instance, at HSS, there's 24, 24% who just didn't respond even to the second attempt for info.
That'd be an accurate statement, right?
Sure, please.
That was great.
Student numbers, and this is as of the 13th. We had 1,282 respond. 684 said no. 54 prefer not to answer. And 544, yeses, they have been matched.
And that's based on power school registration?
Right.
So that age of an upper is at the full?
That's, that's everybody. Free day, and that's why the big numbers are no. I have to break down by school.
Thank you, Pete. I just want to, Lisa, did you want to finish your questions and then we'll move on?
Yeah, I had one other question about the echo courses. And you said there were 25 teachers and I wanted to know in which schools?
I don't know, because they signed up through the Echo Group for Suicide Awareness. It's state law that you have to have two hours if you are certified on any employee. So custodial staff, bus drivers, vice legislative law, you have to have two hours of suicide awareness and prevention. Some elected to go to that webinar, some might be taking a class through our insurance. There's a, like, what do you call it, a webinar, I guess I call it, Tim? So this is just an additional resource to say, hey, if you had availability that evening, you can do it here. But they all have to have two hours within a certain period of time, within a year. So if you did it last year in September, you need to do it by this September. If you do it July, it's July to July. So individuals have different two hours. And they submit that information to the principals who keep track of it. And then we keep track here at the SAU office. We also, all staff members have to take the bullying prevention and awareness course. Most take it through, what is the?
We have probably called, it's called Safe Schools. It's pretty common in the insurance industry. And they have a library of hundreds of courses and they do the bullying and the suicides through there. And anything else someone wants to do?
So, and going back to the Ginkgo bio work, say, the program didn't get off the ground as soon as expected due to staffing. So it's now they magically have staff, does their staff have any kind of medical credentials? Like as an MA nurse or they just off the street helpers?
It wasn't magical, it was trying to figure out all of the school districts that want to be involved with it and the actual staffing and how to do it well. Because, for example, our school district, our high school is doing it on a Friday. And like some of the other schools were picking another time. So they figured out the staffing to be able to support the schedules for our school district. They call them nurses. So I can find that out for you, MJ. I hadn't asked, like, what's their background? They use the term the nurses staff. So let me ask you, and I'll get back to everybody.
And then, second, completely unrelated question going to the end. Can you just elaborate a little bit what this play at school program is? Is that only for kindergartners or is that for all elementary school?
I don't know that much about it. I know it was something that both Mount Lev and Hanover Street teachers were interested that came through, I believe, the DOE a few years ago. And what it's about is that play really is a wonderful way to learn. So you're developing activities that connect with play. And I don't know the age group, the teacher happens to be a kindergarten teacher. And I know the other teacher that did it last year, she was a kindergarten teacher over at Hanover Street School. So they might have focused on kindergarten. And I don't have more information than that. I could ask, because Lisa Sclero is coming on October 13th. I could ask her if she could look into it and provide more information.
We've heard it about kindergarten, I think, right? Play-based.
Was a play-based model, but I wanted, this sounds like almost going beyond that.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah, because I think it was delayed a couple of years too because of COVID, right? So, okay, Lil?
I have a question about Concentric also. You said that you're traveling to Concord on Monday to pick up the tests and that some tests.
Specific level of tests, it's not the, the regular test. I'm looking at MJ because you know this, but it's the next level. And because it's federally funded, you have to go to Concord to pick that one up. So the, the everyday, I'll call them the everyday tests. They can ship those, but that level, I want to say it's the antigen.
Oh, is it when they test positive? And then rapid antigen test?
Rapid antigen, you have to literally pick them up and sign off on them.
So you're, so is the plan that you are going to Concord every week to pick these up?
Oh, no, I, they come in boxes of 40 and I asked for 30 boxes.
Okay.
I'm just hoping they fit in my car. I didn't think about that.
Yeah.
But, and then I talked with Tim because sometimes our maintenance crew goes out in that direction and they could do it. But it wasn't something that we were aware of. And I just wanted to get right out there and pick them up in case we had a positive that I wasn't holding people back.
No, and that's, I just want to know if you're picking up more than one batch, in which you are, so that's great.
Yeah.
That's good. I also had a question, can you describe again, just because I just didn't get a picture in my head of the alternative placement for the HSS cafeteria that you looked at?
Yeah, again, when they, when they come back, what I was thinking would be a good idea for them to come back. Maybe that's the second meeting in October. So if you're, if you're walking down Hanover Street, you're in the fish tank and you're going straight towards the gym. There's a way to build a corridor so that the cafeteria might share a wall on the end of the gym and push out this way into the parking lot. And so you'd build a corridor and you'd build a cafeteria. And it, we would have to, Dana said it would be the time to redo the septic line. Because for some reason, the septic line goes under the gym and he's always worried about what happens if that breaks. It's under the gym. And I believe it was, he sent an email something about, I don't know if it was water or some other system that if you're going, if the board goes that way and the community supports that way, you just want to get those things done when you're, you're doing that project. The estimate, and this is recollection, but I will have the actual data. And I'm looking at Tim, but I think the estimate for the cafeteria was around, was it like 10 to 15 million? And this project is like seven to nine million. And this project is like seven to nine million. I will have that data for you. But it was extremely less. It was, you know, three quarters of the cost because you're just building out. You're not in the middle of two buildings. Um, and the reason that came up was because when I was walking through the multipurpose room over at Mount Lab and they talked about bumping out the cooking kitchen, I said, well, is there a room behind the high school for a potential bump out? And, and if it could come in at a lower cost and it's feasible, could you look into it? So they began looking into it then and then heard comments from the last meeting and was able to like put a concept down. So what they did is they gave a blank design concept to Jack and Dana to kind of fill in the rooms and how that might look. And that, that's what will come back in October.
Okay. And following up with that, I just, because it doesn't say it here in your report and I just want to make sure that when they come back to talk to us, that we wanted to have the specific costs for the specific pieces of the Esser projects that we had looked at before.
Tim. Yep. And Tammy sent a, a little spreadsheet that I sent to Tim and to Paul to fill it out.
Okay.
So Tim would be the Esser number kind of thing. And then they would be what they're considering to be the overall costs. And can we do things over time or what would it be to bundle everything at once? And they'll come back and, and provide like a, a visual in color for people to see.
Okay. Thank you.
So Joanna, I have a question about timing and I'm sure other people who are more experienced know more about this, but what is the timeline for getting the renovations and potentially reassigning the building to the city? Like if we decided to do, what do we, what's the timeline for getting all of that on a ballot by March?
Um, the board would probably have to make a decision in December because I believe we do warrant articles written in December. And then would they go for deliberative session, which is usually the end of January, beginning of February? So that would be the timeline.
For both things? Or for the renovations?
I thought you were asking me about Seminary Hill. Warrant article?
Yeah. So I'm asking you about two different things.
So there's two pieces for Seminary Hill. That's why I got confused with two.
Got it.
Cause there's the agreement and then there's the lease, a long-term lease. Both have to get approved. It's the same timeline for any warrant article to go forward.
So we would have to have all of the, all of the numbers, all of the decision, everything together by December in order to get it on the ballot for March.
Yes.
Okay.
By the, by the end of December. So we'll have, Tim and I have already started working on the budget. And we'll be meeting with the principals. So we've been fortunate that the last couple of years, the, we left that Saturday budget meeting with approval. And then we didn't really have to focus on that too much anymore. And then we looked at the other warrant articles because Tim will bring warrant articles for the special ed capital reserve fund. And we always have conversations about that. And so the next step I would be thinking would probably be, you know, that's why I started marinades early in the fall. So that people would start thinking about this because it does build up pretty quickly as far as if it's a March vote. You probably want board approval and agreement to put the warrants forward. Would you say, Tim, by the first meeting in January or that's too late?
Uh, I'd have to look at the calendar to see the exact date, but it is, it is a tight timeframe. If you are doing renovations that require some sort of bonding article that backs things up more because you have to have a bond public hearing in the beginning of January. So, um, those general timelines that Joanna gave are right. So if the deliberative session is, you know, the end of the month, you have to post that for twenty-one days before that, I think it is. And we, the DRA, Department of Revenue gives a very thankfully a good timeline. So we know what days we have to hit. But backing that all up, I know it sounds crazy, but for a March vote, you know, you're, you really need to have your decisions made by, you know, shortly after Thanksgiving's because we have to write the warrant articles. We got to get them approved by DRA. Our lawyer has to look at them. They have to be posted for a while. So it's tight.
So do you feel like we're moving at a pace that would give us a chance to make that happen or?
I would, as a superintendent, I would like to at some point have the renovation where articles go forward. I think people are very aware of the fact our facilities don't match, um, where we want our children to be as far as our educational experience here. And so I think that if, if we could have marinades come back, because it'll be the second time that they would have come this year and then on the fourth Wednesday in October, ask them questions, have that information, get the budget approved on that Saturday, meaning the board vote on it. Then have them come back that first December meeting, the board at that time should be ready to go to say, do we want this? Do we want that? Give that information to Tim Ball. So that we can develop the warrant articles because there's winter break in between and we'd have to hit the ground running. But we have done this before. It's, it's always the same timeline. It's always, so it's just a matter of, it's a great question that you're asking. So board members can wrap their minds around like, well, we're really going to have to make decisions at this board meeting. To move, to move it forward to school year because it, it's a short time period. We've been talking about it quite a bit and I know finance and facilities had talked about it and then we were off due to COVID. So we've had this little gap to, to circle back around and, um, I'm, I'm not using the word modernization. I haven't used it in a while because I don't think that we're really doing modernizations. I, I really think that these are truly important renovations. And you know, a lot of these spaces are where our underrepresented students get supports and meals and things like that. So, you know, I've mentioned that a couple of times. I think that that's why it's important. We've talked about the entrances several times. So our high school has approval from, I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank. It's the agency that oversees schools. And, and for several years, they've talked about not having accessible front entrance. So it's time, we have to do that report again.
Because there's the stairs, you mean?
Yes. The senior square is accessible, but the front
Right.
isn't accessible for all. And that's been around since I began because that, Tim, do you know what I'm referencing? The accreditation that the high school gets to do the report, drawing a blank.
The ASK? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it is the ASK, New England Association of Schools and Colleges, I believe. So that's been kind of an outlying factor since before I, I came in as a superintendent.
Okay. So then can you just go back to the Seminary Hill School? What is the timeline for that?
The same.
It's the same.
And they're coming to see, so the state's coming to the meeting on October thirteenth?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Great. And potentially marinades, the second meeting in October.
Yeah. I thought that that would be a lot because Lisa's coming to do the curriculum update on the thirteenth as well. So I thought, you hear that, then have marinades come back, ask them a lot of questions on that Wednesday. Now that I'm seeing nods, I'll confirm their availability for that, that date.
Is that, oh, sorry.
Then we have one, then we have one board meeting the second week in November, followed by the budget meeting the Saturday before Thanksgiving. And we don't meet Thanksgiving. Eve. Eve. I couldn't think of the word.
Um, is Mar, is the poss, potential different, um, Hanover Street School cafeteria going to go to FNF first or just directly to the board?
I could definitely bring it to FNF first. We just had the conversation.
I think we, I think we meet right before that.
Showed it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd be happy to do that.
I'll ask quickly about the Esser, um, funds and any construction projects that come out of that. Those are not going to be warrant articles, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So those would be a direct board, or well, FNF and then a kind of a direct board decision.
They would, but they, there's not enough Esser funding to do all of the projects we have conditional approval for.
Right.
So, and with the Davis Bacon wages, it kind of makes sense to focus on a particular project or building. But you could say to the taxpayers, we want to put this renovation project forward. Please note that X amount of funding for Esser is being used to do X, Y, and Z. So they're aware of that. It's not all just coming out of the bond, but we're thoughtfully using the Esser funding. Now that might be more of a letter than actual in the article. That's why we need attorneys to help us write them. But I think it would be important to know that what we're getting, we're putting into our facilities to try to not just go through the taxpayer base. Because in Lebanon, the city and the school, we're all the same people that we're asking from. So people sometimes forget that it's like, it's all that one community when you're trying to do projects.
So just another timeline question, and I think I'm, I'm understanding you. So we will, we still need the board to have their priority list and figure out the, uh, renovation projects also in November, December. So that it can be kind of coherent.
So it has to be bid out.
Yeah.
And, and in order for those projects. So in talking with Paul, there are some contractors that aren't even saying they'll review or respond to RFQs because they're so booked for the next year or two. So it was good that the board last spring at least agreed to do Mount Lab, the two rooms, because we can start moving forward with that one. And it's all a matter of, of timing. So there is quite a bit the board does between now and December. It's the prioritization of the Esser funding and also the pri, prioritization is if there's an interest in doing renovations. I'm not assuming that there is. And the, the budget, um, Seminary Hill, we also have LEA negotiations going on this year. There's just a lot on our, on our plates. As those of you on the committees with me know, it's quite a bit happening.
Any other questions for Joanna?
Well, I looked at the timeline over we were talking. Um, if, if you do anything that requires borrowing, you have to have a bond hearing by January eighteenth. It's a little later than, same timeframe, but because it's a little later than I thought, because usually it's, the calendar is pushed back a little bit just because the way it falls. So a bond hearing by January eighteenth, deliberative session is not before February fifth. So we probably do it February fifth. So, um, you get the picture. The problem, you know, with the holidays, getting this stuff sort of front-loaded before the holidays works best. And then you can finalize stuff and, and January is you need to, so you can get it done by a bond hearing, if you need a bond hearing.
Attorneys get very busy too. And if you're not out in front, they don't have time to, to circle back around. So we've been fortunate that we've been pretty proactive and drafted things for them to tweak it.
All right. So Tim, I think your update is next.
Okay. In your packet, there was some slides. So talking about timeline, it's a good, good discussion. So what we decided, what we started doing a bunch of years ago, this sort of, uh, just kind of a working up to the, the budget. So we have some history, some background, I guess. Before you get your budget binder, well, before you get your budget binders, you're going to be deep in budget with, uh, meeting with the, your individual school. So your binder should be, uh, sort of just supporting, supporting document already and what you already know. So this week is week one and what will happen is, uh, when we give you a binder in the back of the whole, you have all the budget documents and in the very back of the binder, you'll have these four chapters. And it's the same format every year. And this is really, uh, a look backward to last year and I actually covered most of it, pretty much all of this last time. So, uh, but at least you have it in front of you now. Well, I reported then to the, uh, under DOE twenty-five and the MS twenty-five to the state. Uh, as a total unassigned fund balance of one point nine million, one point two is from unexpendited appropriations, meaning, uh, we spent under budget. And we have three hundred and seven thousand dollars in excess revenue. Almost all of that is from the impact fee thing. And two ninety, three ninety-seven, nine nine-two, I, I tried to refer in this, this accounting transaction where some, uh, some checks were cast by the bank before the fiscal year began. And so the auditors had me hold back some fund balance from last year to cover that. And that, that fund balance is supposed to pay for that was in this year. So that actually just bumps it free. Those last two things are essentially one-time things that are vagaries of this year. Uh, certainly the unassigned fund bound, the prepaid expense piece was the excess revenue could happen again, but probably not. Warrant article two, which is the budget warrant article, uh, assumes. So when you, when we talk about budget and we go through this whole process at the end of the day and, and that Saturday, you'll have, you'll leave here knowing what the potential impact on a, to someone's taxes is. And the impact we put together for the last several years, this is totally up to you, but the last several years, we've made that calculation based on it having a million dollars left at the end of the prior year. Uh, you can make it two hundred and fifty thousand. You can assume no contribution and then whatever you get back, we'll just lower the taxes. But we've assumed a million dollars. So what that means is if you say the budget's going to go up eighty-three cents is what we originally said last year. If you don't have a million dollars left, the budget will then go up more than eighty-three cents. See what I'm saying? Cause the million dollars lowers your tax rate for the next year. So we, I try to, you know, I hope, I usually hope we have that million dollars left because we want the tax rate to be what we promised it would be. So in this case, what this means is that instead of having a million dollars going back, there's one point nine going back. So that nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is about forty-one cents lower. So the tax rate will be forty-one cents lower than advertised. Uh, we'll get to that in a minute. We're contributing five hundred thousand dollars to the, uh, Ca, Capital Reserve Fund for Buildings and three hundred thousand dollars for the Capital Reserve Fund for Special Ed. We'll have another chapter that goes over those, those balances specifically, that those were warrant, warrant-articled things. Any contribution to a warrant article, I mean, to a Capital Reserve Fund has to go on the warrant. The board can take money out of a Capital Reserve Fund, but can't put it in without approval. The next two pages, uh, it's just some general summary of some larger categories. Uh, the numbers aren't, these, this is for informational purposes. So the numbers are, should be close to detail, but it's not going to add up exactly. Three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in wages. If I get that number wrong, it's just because I need to get bifocal. Three sixty-four thousand in wages. Uh, and there's some major categories there. The one that sticks out and of course is the, uh, the, the para remaining. And to that I would say, uh, all I would say is that we didn't make any cuts or anything. So we budget, as you might imagine, believe it or not, the budget I'm referring to right now in this review was written two years ago. Um, and we budget for what we have, what our needs are then, uh, and the people we have then. So as people leave and come in, maybe they quit in the middle of the year and we hire someone cheaper. That was the savings. I would say that, uh, every year, I mean, I I don't want to be as perfect as possible, but it's, uh, you, you gotta, hopefully you understand that we're moving, we're looking at over a year and ahead. And so we budget for what we have. We don't budget for what we think we might need in the future. We go, what we'll do. And then of course it is budget process is I'll sit down with the staffing list of every building with the principals. Uh, and the teachers are usually pretty easy, but the pairs will go person by person and make sure they, they match up with a, uh, either a classroom or a, or a child. And that's what we budget. And that, that left a little bit left. And, uh, also keep in mind that, uh, I feel like we, we have a COVID exemption for how exact we need to be. Custodians, coaches, summer school and transportation is a, a big pot left in transportation. And there's some, actually somewhere, I'm going to save some of my detail on that because that's another slide coming up. And then, uh, non-personnel on the next slide, uh, specialized tuition. And transportation, those are, that's non-labor transportation. So we're looking at costs for, uh, there was the one detail I missed when I did this two years ago is there was a lease that expired in the middle of the year. So there, there's some savings on lease. So I guess that's the other thing I don't emphasize is that we don't spend money. Like we, oh, we have sixty-five grand that's suspended somewhere out. So the lease wasn't paid. So we didn't, wasn't due. So we didn't pay it. And that was corrected in the year and now we did have sixty-two thousand dollars less, left in fuel. It's really depending on fuel prices. You might imagine we, you know, we go by where we go and what we, and we estimate a cost of fuel. For example, uh, last year's fuel price was lower than it is right now. So we'll see what the damage is this year. That's just the vagaries of doing a budget. And then there's some, uh, facilities money, which is a pretty low, pretty low amount in regular ed tuition. Uh, we, you know, we, we pay money to Hartford area tech. That's, uh, regular ed tuition. And we have an agreement to pay, um, up to a hundred thousand dollars to the Leder Charter School. That's considered regular ed tuition. We pay, I think, two thousand, I think it's four thousand dollars a student, up to twenty-five students. I can't remember the, the math comes up to a hundred thousand. I think it's four thousand dollars a student, up to twenty five students. I can't remember that. The math comes out to a hundred thousand dollars. So if we don't use that whole allocation, we don't pay it. So I duplicate my stuff. All right, good. I'll just follow that because I got my pages on next up. So I talked about fuel being lower than lower per price per gallon and budgeted. And we did less. Here's the big COVID thing. So we did less trips and we did athletics last year, but we did them all in the Upper Valley, which makes a big difference. I went to I went to a football game in Manchester West a couple of weeks ago, last week there in Milford, like that kind of stuff didn't happen last year. We played Hanover, Claremont. So all those trips were closer track, for example, were two or three. If you go to a track meet normally in a regular non COVID year, they typically eight to ten schools and their all day events. And you might imagine the bus drivers there all day. So I was thinking, even though we did athletics, we did save a lot of money on on wages, just because of those kind of trips. Summer school, we didn't run. Now, again, we ran summer school this past summer, but we're talking about the previous summer and we didn't run summer school. We had custodian savings as we've talked a hundred times about we're short on custodians. And the benefits are going to track. If you're if you have some salary money left, you're going to have some benefits money left, as you might imagine, because they're tied. Workers' comp, I did want to point out that workers' comp, you know, we budget based on a premium, and then we assume a couple of percent increase. What I like about our workers' comp program, which is a private insurer insurer, is they give you discounts if you have good workers' comp. So like we got a twenty percent discount off the base rate this this past year. So hopefully you'll see workers' comp savings every year if we keep being good and being healthy. This chart is a chart I've been doing for the last couple of years. It just shows the unassigned fund balance history since before before Joanne and I arrived here. And the last two columns are interesting, what I wanted to point out. So when I did this slide last year, I had originally reported or had done had done the D O E twenty five for that one point three million dollar amount. Then the auditors came in and said, we're going to withhold that three hundred thousand dollars. So the yellow, I mean, the the white up there shows what I showed you last year. The red is what it actually turned out to be when they set the tax rate. And then the next line over, the red is the expenditure part of it. And the green is all that one time expenditure stuff. So you can see the numbers high, but I wanted to show you that from expenditure standpoint, that's much more in line with history. So hopefully to give you some assurance that we're working our tails off to try to come in at a decent budget number. Next slide, is that it? Also, we're going to be with the principals. So Joanne, reference budget, just a little behind the behind the curtain. The principals right now are tasked with getting numbers from their teachers and staff is what they need for next year. We we say we try to do a zero sum budget. So we just don't say you get three hundred bucks a kid, and that's what your supply line is. Some people do that. What we've been doing since for many years is we're saying, no, math department, what do you need for next year? Look at your what your costs are going to be. So all that stuff gets rolled up in the budget. So math and science and all this stuff gets rolled up to the number their principal puts in the budget. The principal is doing that now. And by October nineteenth, Joanne and myself and the other S A U staff directors will be meeting with the principals between the week of October nineteen and twenty one. You come up for the next one, October twenty five to twenty nine, you have all been assigned schools that you are repping. You are and you need to you're going to need to give me some dates and times during that week that you can have free during the day. Within reason, like we're flexible, but we all have family, so we don't do it at eight o'clock at night.
And I think Tim, you usually send them a note to remind them.
I'll be reaching out to you, right? Principals have their schedule already. We need to figure out here between now and the next week or two what you're what you can do for between the October five twenty five to twenty nine. And of course, it's tough because what there's two of you on a team. So we have to try to get them all together. And then what we're going to talk about next is the projects. Just basically, when you look at the budget, what you're going to be looking at and some knowns and unknowns for next year, that will be easier. I think we have less of an issue this year than last year, just because the way that Hampshire retirement's worked and stuff. So there's another slide didn't come up. What would the board like to know about the budget process? And is there anything you want to know? So that's just, you can tell me now, you can tell me whenever. What do you? Those of you who've done it before, you know, we go pretty much line by line to the detail that you want. And if there's something that you're saying I'd really like to know more about, let me know, and we'll I'll try to craft something that you like.
I can add that I'll be putting forward a social worker position. I've worked on it over the summer and I'm drafting a job description to start next year. I think the salary based on other schools will be between sixty and eighty thousand, based on the experience of that person coming in. And then if they select insurance, we offer insurance. So that would be an additional cost. So it'd be under our S A U budget, and the person who would report directly to me would work with the different schools. And when I met with the city manager, the there's a social worker that's going to be hired regionally at the city level. He mentioned that. So that person can connect with our person as well to try to get resources out for families and students. So I don't usually bring staffing positions forward. I think the last group was the assistant principals seven years ago or so. But I do think that this is an important position, and we've tossed it around for several years, and the pandemic came. So I didn't want to lose track of it.
Lisa?
Is there a reason that the social worker would report to you and not the principals?
Yes, because they're going to work of all four buildings. So they would be at the S A U office would be kind of where their house. And then they would be working with all the principals, but they would report to me, just like Lisa does and Tim does. It'd be an S A U position because it's not assigned to one building, but to all four buildings.
And Jay?
So I have a question for Tim. When we're going over the budgets, in particular with the building we're assigned, is there a way to suppress the comments that come out on the line items so that we're only either seeing the net new ask or significant ask? I like because a lot of times, you know, you go through the comments, be like, this is for fifteen highlighters, and this is for eight books. So you you kind of lose a lot in the noise because it lists every single thing that's asked for in that category. Is there a way we can just look at the net new ask for the year or the the large ask for the year in that category?
Well, yes, there is. But it is all or nothing. So we ask. I mean, I can, there's a couple of things I can do. One, I can we we want the principals to have that detail, but I we don't need them to upload it to the system. They basically, I think they copy and paste into their you know, we don't, we don't need to know about the highlight highlighters and stuff. But I do think usually the board likes to know much more general stuff, like this is up ten thousand dollars because we're adding a new X or something. And so we can, I don't want to suppress all those comments because I think you're going to get more like, what is this about? What's this about? But I can, I can emphasize to the principals to make sure whoever is actually uploading those comments, I'm assuming it's one of the secretaries. Don't upload all those interior notes as to how you how many, especially in the supplies category, that that's
And I would mention that we've experienced with the school board of Lebanon, people who wanted to know how much paper towels we were buying. So we went to that level. So just know that we have experience where people want to know the number of pencils, the number of basketballs. We've had discussions about that in the budget. So we created that so people could answer their questions in full transparency, like this is how we got to six thousand dollars. And in our budget, you should see that certain lines will go up and down, which is natural, because if you bought social studies texts last year, the social studies tax should be in there the following year. And that's that's a good zero based budget. But there are some things that might remain year after year. So I just I mentioned that because we have been asked to that level before, and that's why you're given all the detail. And that's just the history of it.
It's hard to separate out what's the net new in there. Looking at it, it kind of takes away, I think, from some of the discussion because you're too busy trying to hunt through the line to figure out, oh, it was really the textbooks that got taken out or the because you get lost in the
I I personally go to the right on the column, and I look at things that have a major jump. And then I go back and like, okay, why is that a major jump? And I do the same with a major decrease. Particularly special education, sometimes a student may have moved out or a student may have moved in, and a residential placement could be easily three hundred thousand dollars. So you can see lots of kind of swings with special education.
I think if I hear you the feedback, right? I think for, I mean, there's only four supply lines that that sort of stuff fits into one for each building. Well, no, there's eight because there's one for special ed too. But for the supply lines, I think we can give guidance that they need to keep that detail. But I we don't need pencils and pens in the infinite visions of budget software, as long as you have that detail. But just for those like five or six lines, that's where it really gets tedious is that but Joanne's right, like, and some of you probably have experienced it. It's like, well, how did you come up with? Why are you going up a thousand dollars in in the supply line? Well, I mean,
Toner went up. Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
There the phone line cost went up too.
But most lines, I mean, there's a thousand lines in the budget about, and nine hundred and fifty of them. I think you can put a comment in that won't be too distracting. I'm not going to promise perfection, but we'll try to make sure some of those major lines are cleaned up a little bit. So but I can't turn them all off. I can't turn some of them off. They're all off, they're all on. So
Anything will help.
Appreciate that.
Other questions for Tim? All right. So I think we're now on eight B. So unfinished business around proposals for the delicate assembly, Steve and Lil. And we need, I think, a motion to what we have in the package, the continuing resolutions. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review this and have any thoughts, but you know, if you do take it away, then there's new resolutions too.
Right. So I, as far as a motion, I think what we need to do is at the end of this, we just need to know how the board wants to vote on all these individual proposals. But I don't know if we need to take a motion. I don't know how that works.
I feel like we've done one motion in the past for
For the whole thing?
I think for the whole thing, once you kind of
So we're saying would the motion be something like we're accepting the vote as we have discussed it for the, okay.
I believe so.
Great. So it's going to be relatively fast. The first thing we'll talk about are the continuing resolutions. So these are the resolutions that have to be voted on three times before they become part of N H S B A's ongoing sort of rules of conduct. They have a specific name for it, but I'm forgetting what the name is now. And so these, I don't know how you all have to help me with this because I don't know how you all have voted on these in the past, because these are not they don't tell me and they never said, but we can talk about it right now, just in how we're going to vote on them now. They're not super controversial. So the first is that N H S B A. So what these resolutions will do, just for clarification purposes, is these clarify, these resolutions guide the N H S B A's legislative efforts going forward. So the lobbying that they will do on behalf of school boards, these resolutions guide the lobbying that they will do. So this is why we decide if we support it or not, we're going to support what our lobbying organization is doing for us. The first one is N H S B A supports reinstituting full school building aid funding to state funded levels greater than state appropriations prior to twenty eleven school building aid moratorium. So do we support that or do we not? There's no additional information. This is something that we voted on two years ago, and we're going to vote on again this year. Does the board, how's the board feel about this? Okay, just raise your hand if you support it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Tammy's, yes. Okay. Great. Next one, number two, N H S B A calls upon the New Hampshire legislature to fully fund any legislation that creates or has fiscal impact on local school districts. If you support it, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. N H S B A number three supports legislation to restrict possession of firearms on school property to authorize law enforcement personnel only. Yes, okay. You can flip the page, go to the next page. This is that N H S B A resolves this to ask the state to seek to provide viable financial solutions and funding models to assist municipalities in completing the true last mile broadband internet networks. So this is just encouraging the state to make funding available for broadband internet as much as possible. All those in favor? Yes, okay. Number five, N H S B A supports equity and inclusion in all aspects of education, including adherence to all anti discrimination laws, rules and statutes such that no children no one, no student is excluded or discriminated against for any reason whatsoever. And there's a whole list of reasons. Do we support this? Yes, okay. Six, they, the the resolution is that it's a call from two other school boards for the immediate return of prior methods of calculation for I D E A federal and state funds. So this is very specific to a change in I D E A funding that was made last year. So do we support this?
I guess, Tim, do you have any background on this? Do you know what this is about? Number six.
I don't. I apologize.
So basically, it says a little bit in the section before this, that originally they, well, the change was that I D E A allocation funds were being dispersed directly to the school district in which the child was registered and not to the student's residence. So that means that if it's if a child was in a if a child is 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 coming from a different school, different school district, right? They live in a different school district, it would go to that school district as opposed to going to the place where the child lives. Right? So they were saying they oppose that change. They want to go back to the that it would go to this to the city in which the child lives. Does that make sense?
That's not where the child is attending school.
Right, for whatever reason, because they're going to a different tuition reasoning. So they want to go back to where the child lives. So does that make sense?
That's only these two.
No, they're the ones who supported it. I actually don't know why they specified them because they don't specify for any of the other ones, but all of these are put forward by other school districts. And you'll see that in the next resolutions that we do. So it's not just for that school district. It's just those school districts suggested this.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, it's I don't, again, I don't know why they wrote it this way because it is not clear.
Maybe because they're small and they're losing out because they don't have a high school or something.
It's probably that. It's probably why. My guess would be yes, that they don't have a high school, that they they tuition out to a different high school. And so to have that funding go back to the town as opposed to the place where they're tuitioning to, it means something to them, but it would apply to any other school. And it's just a, it's just a asking for the N H S B A to lobby on behalf of that. It's not a guarantee.
Tim feel about that, though? I mean, if we're the ones educating and they don't live in our residence, would we want the money?
Counter included, seems like if we're on receiving it, gets to coming here, we want those thoughts.
Right. And we can, we can say no, we say we don't support it.
I'd like to kind of Tim the way in on this.
I mean, based on the the stuff we have here, that's the first thing that red flag raises to me is that our area agreement doesn't have a special, a separate special ed calculation, for example. So if that money flowed to Plainfield and not us or Granton and not us, then that would at least on the surface, I don't know how that would help Lebanon. Like, as I first read this, I'm like, I don't know how this benefits Lebanon at all.
Right. So then we cannot support it. So that's what we do. We, if we don't support it, then we don't support it. So all those in favor of supporting this this proposal? One, okay. All right. And the last one is school administrative units be held, shall it should be held harmless during the twenty one twenty two fiscal year for differentiated aid. And that's the aid that refers to the free and reduced meal problem that we talked about because free and reduced meals were because all lunches were free are free and reduced meals were not calculated correctly for last year. And so they're they're suggesting that everyone go back to the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty numbers, which I think is actually what they did. But this is right.
Yeah, I just went to a class on this today, and we'll talk about this during the revenue thing, but they actually did make a law for this year. The whole harmless means go back to the to two thousand nineteen rates. That's what that's what you'll see comes through.
So this is a little out of date, but do we support this change? Yes, okay. Thank you. Those are the continuing resolutions. Now, the proposed resolutions, these are ones that have not yet been voted on. This is the first time that they've been voted on. So there's a lot more information about these. There are supporting documents for them. And then N H S B A includes a statement about whether they support the recommendation or not, the resolution or not. The first one, which is submitted by Massoma Valley School Board, is the New Hampshire School Board Association, so establish and maintain a scholarship fund for student representatives, school board representatives who have served in their district school board during their high school career. The N H S B A does not support this as a resolution because the resolutions are intended to direct their The NHSBA does not support this as a resolution, because the resolutions are intended to direct their legislative advocacy. And this is not a legislative advocacy question. However, if the delegates vote in support of this proposal. Then they will establish a continuing scholarship program without the proposal becoming an official resolution. So they're willing to support this. They're just not going to make, support it as a resolution if the delegates, if we vote for it. So, uh, all those in favor of supporting this resolution or any questions on this resolution before we vote?
That, is there any, like, how much money are they talking about? And, and, and what is it being put toward?
So this is what I think would happen. It's this college scholarship, right? And I think this is the discussion would happen about how much money that would be, right? That's what would come up during the discussion. Um, but yeah, this is, they're written as written, right? So the proposals come as the school boards around the state, um, propose them.
And that like me.
The money, um, would come from, I think NHSBA's, um, whatever you call it, their, uh, what is the word that I want? Puffers their revenue, right? I mean, that, I don't know. It doesn't, it doesn't say. I'm assuming we'll talk about this at the, um, the, the conference.
Uh, they do make reference to, there is a scholarship for, um. Kids, uh, members.
Yes.
They advertise that.
Yes.
In the spring or something like that. So, and that was, I think, maybe one or maximum two.
So it's the same kind of thing. It would be something that NHSBA funds.
Minimal.
Yeah.
Like every school.
Oh, no. It doesn't, doesn't require us to do any additional money at all. Well, we, we don't know. We would have to look. We, that's what has to come up in the discussion is whether it does affect our dues and how it would affect them. And again, all of this comes out, we, we don't know until, because, because the school who proposed it, school board to propose it, hasn't given additional detail, right? So we don't know until we have that, the delegate discussion. So I guess our question is, do we support this or do we support this with conditions, right? Meaning, yes, we support it as long as it doesn't raise our dues or we support it in theory or we don't support it. Okay, so let's go back to our regular question. Those, all those who support this, raise your hands. One, two, three, four. Oh, that's going to be hard. Okay. Four out of nine.
Is there a reason we don't have a student representative in this board?
We have, we have had it in the past. I think it's just been inconsistent.
Through student council with, with Ian, they usually let me know within the next couple of weeks if a student wants to participate. So we've always had one. We had one last year. Um, they usually come at the beginning of the meeting and they do an update and they're welcome to stay or, or they leave. So it's just a matter of interest.
We have four out of the nine.
Four out of, well.
Support it.
Four out of eight, it's only eight of us.
Four to eight.
Mm-hmm.
And if that was the full of support, was there a support with conditions?
Yeah, that's another option.
Like if it doesn't raise our rates or dues or anything. We just need to know how, how do we vote when we go to this delegation?
Because four out of eight does not give us a clear mandate.
Why you don't support it, then they can better represent us.
I don't know, it just seems.
I just don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would say our dues are probably. Other than my, like.
I think it's like, I think the one for the children of is either one thousand dollars or five hundred dollars. It's not very much.
Uh, I think it's worth.
Well, we're clearly divided. It doesn't.
Well, that's because one and one.
We're an educational body that we wouldn't be supporting people to get more education.
Okay, can we do that vote one more time? Just because I think I might not have voted, um, when I was counting. So, all right. So all those in favor of supporting, uh, this resolution from the Skoma Valley School Board, raise your hand. Oh, so, okay. Well, now we're, now we have a majority, five, eight. Excellent. Okay. Next one, from the Wilton Linda Borough Cooperative School Board. The New Hampshire School Board Association will advise and confirm all SAUs are paying and segregating dues slash payments to NHSBA in accordance with the law RSA fifteen five. Um, so the board, the New Hampshire School Board Association says that this, they don't believe this is an appropriate resolution. Because again, this is not guiding their position relative to legislative advocacy. However, they also believe this matter is worthy of explanatory discussion at the delegate assembly. I have no idea what that means. Um, that's extremely unhelpful recommendation, so. And there's not a lot of discussion, except that this is the law. So I'm not actually sure why we would need a resolution. To make sure that we're following the law, because we should be following the law anyway. So, uh, all those in favor of supporting, right? Well, again, it's making this a resolution. All those in favor of making this a resolution, raise your hand. No, okay. So we are not supporting this. All right. Number ten, submitted by Keen School Board. Uh, the resolution is that the NHSBA supports diversity, equity and inclusion in all aspects of our schools. Is committed to the concept that free and open dialogue around such concepts as racism and sexism is a vital component to education. And opposes any actions which limit this free exchange of ideas. So the NHSBA board director supports this, um, largely because they believe that recent legislation prohibiting teaching. Of so-called divisive concepts is contrary to the existing NHSBA resolutions, as well as state and federal anti-discrimination rules and statutes. So. Any want to comment on this or do we just want to vote? And now all those in favor of supporting this resolution, raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, thank you. Number eleven, there's only two more, get ready. Um, this is submitted by the Merrimack Valley School Board. New Hampshire School Board Association calls upon the New Hampshire Legislature to fund a post-graduation transition program for each school district. To provide a continuum of guidance for graduate transition from high school to vocation, college and/or I'm assuming career. The NHSBA does not support this. They believe that this program has merit and is needed, but they also believe that. NHSBA resolutions relative to school funding should primarily be focused on full adequacy aid funding, full special education funding and full building aid funding. Which this is not a part of. Um, and I think that is just too narrowly focused. That's their recommendation. All those in favor of supporting this proposal, please raise your hand. Okay. Excellent. And finally, this one is very long. I'm going to skip to the end where it's more clear. So the very last paragraph, uh, the NHSBA should oppose legislation such as, but not limited to HB five forty-four or HB two of twenty twenty-one. Containing language that promotes an unconstitutional restriction on free speech that could thereby deny New Hampshire public school students of all races and genders. The opportunity to think critically, openly and inclusively about subjects such as racism, systemic racism and sexism. So the New Hampshire School Board Association does not support this because they feel like the resolution is too narrowly focused. And that the resolution from Keen, number ten, which we did support encompasses this and all other kinds of things. So they say this one is too narrow. All those in favor of supporting this resolution, please raise your hand. No. All right. So to review, we are not supporting number twelve, number eleven. Number nine. And we are supporting number eight and number ten and not supporting number six of the continuing resolutions. Thank you all.
Wait, so we need to do the motion, I think.
Yes, we need to do a motion for those.
Is there a motion just to summarize or to confirm what Lil, Lil, sorry, just said?
I can, I'll make the motion because I just said it all. Um, okay, so, uh, I'd like to make a motion to. Uh, support all of the continuing resolutions for the New Hampshire School Board Association. Um, delegate assembly except for resolution number six and to. Uh, support of the proposed resolutions, resolutions number twelve, eleven and. No, sorry. To support resolutions ten and eight. And not support resolutions nine, eleven and twelve. All those in favor?
And unanimous.
Thank you all. Sorry, that was a little scattered. All right. That finishes our unfinished business. So on to committee updates. So financing facilities, next meeting is Thursday, October seventh. Policy Committee, next meeting is Tuesday, October twelfth. Education Committee, uh, we just met this past Monday. Next meeting is Monday, October eighteenth. Um, I'll just do a really quick recap of what we discussed this past Monday. We talked a lot about, um, we had an update from Lisa on the summer curriculum work. The programming and a lot of discussion about the spring twenty twenty-one assessment data, uh, SAS and also SATs. And Ian and Bonnie joined for that. And we'll have Karen, uh, talk to us at the October meeting. Um, PNN, next non-meeting is Thursday, September thirtieth. Uh, Student Wellness Advisory Committee, next meeting is Wednesday, October sixth. Hartford Area Career and Technical Center, next meeting is Tuesday, November sixteenth. Um, Area Committee, next meeting Tuesday, October twenty-sixth. In the City School Joint Task Force is meeting on October twenty-first. All right. So then we have one more item under new business to, uh, accept the five thousand dollars donation from the Cunningham family for the high school baseball team. Is there a motion? All right.
Five thousand dollars. I move that we accept the five thousand dollar donation from the Cunningham family for the LHS baseball team.
Is there a second? MJ? Any discussion? Uh, all in favor? It's unanimous and, and thank you very much for your donation. All right. Future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions? MJ?
I saw a follow-up. I saw somewhere that it looks like there's going to be a dedication ceremony for the baseball field. So is there an update on when that's gonna happen? It looked like they were posting.
On that, do you know anything? Was that, that in the high school, like letter?
No, it was on some, uh, social media thing that they. I think I gotta invite via Facebook.
Would you be able to follow up with Ian on that, please? And just CC me on the, the email? Because Dana would want to be involved as well. I don't know where we are with the signage for that. I know the family was involved with it, but I haven't heard anything since.
It's nice to kind of close the loop. Seems that we had a lot of discussion over, over several meetings.
Yeah.
I just have a question. The, um, the next city school joint task force meeting is October twenty-first. Is that before or after the board meeting at which the city will be? Okay, good. I just want to make sure it was after. Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? All right. So important dates, uh, the next school board meeting is Wednesday, October thirteenth, six thirty PM here. And then our annual budget meeting, Saturday, November twentieth, who, eight AM?
Be whatever time you'd like. We usually have like bagels, muffins, fruit and stuff like that. So if you prefer eight thirty or nine. We do try, last year we didn't do the lunch, right? We, we were done by lunch, so. It's just a matter of how long you want to discuss the budget that morning. People prefer eight thirty start. Is it easier with kids? No.
For some reason, I thought it was nine last year, but I think, I think you're right. I think it was eight.
I don't remember.
Yeah, okay.
That's right.
Yeah.
Get it over with. All right.
Get up early.
Yeah.
Keep it at eight.
I lost my last sheet. Is there any other business? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Steven, all right, second. MJ, all right, all in favor of adjourning? unanimous. Thank you.